I want to call the Glassboro zoning board of adjustments, regular business meeting for April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Eric, can you please read the opening statement?
Pursuant to the Open Publics Meetings Act, I hereby announce that adequate notice this meeting, as required by said act, has been provided by adopted a schedule of regular monthly meetings for the year two thousand and twenty-three, which schedule was posted on the Borough Hall bulletin board, mailed to the South Jersey newspapers, and filed with the Borough Council.
Eric, please rise for salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Ellis.
Here.
Mr. Moonan.
Here.
Ms. Camiola.
Here.
Mr. Jimenez is excused. Mr. Harvey.
Harvey.
Mr. Santor.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Perner is excused. Ms. Wyman.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Mr. Casaboum.
Here.
Ms. Adamson.
Here.
All right, Mr. Ellis, can we swear on our professionals, please?
Well, surely. I'm going to ask each of you, Ms. Adamson and Mr. Casaboum, each of you to raise your right hand. Do each of you swear a firm testimony about to give in each application tonight is true and correct to the best of knowledge, information, and belief?
Yes.
All right, two yeses, thank you.
All right, everybody has a copy of the minutes.
He's done. Swear it on. That's sworn in. Yep.
Everybody has a copy of the minutes. Any comments, concerns, or any changes you need to make? Do I have motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. All right, we all have the bills. Everybody, hopefully has had a chance to take a look at it.
I'll move we pay the bills.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. Do we have any incoming or outgoing correspondence?
I sent one via email today regarding Burger King for everybody to review with responses to Ms. Adamson's comments.
Yep, I saw that. All right. Is there anybody here from the public that has anything to say that's not on the agenda for this evening? Let's go through our scheduled applications.
Well, indeed, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the first application is ZB twenty-three dash zero seven, Vision two-one-four, East High Q O Z B Inc. This was a request, Mr. Chair, members, that it be postponed to June fifteenth. As it happens, one of their professionals has a conflict with tonight's hearing. Frankly, maybe serendipitous, we got a lot going on. So respectfully, they've requested that adjournment. This matter will be heard at the next meeting, May eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three, seven o'clock back here. The statement, this notice also, or this announcement also extends to the fact that no further notice will be given. So if you received a notice by virtue of the two-hundred-foot list, or you saw something in the newspaper, you need to show up here again, May eighteenth, seven o'clock. Is anyone here interested in this application, perhaps? Perhaps not. All right, well, thank you. And that's it.
Mr. Chairman, can you let the record be placed, June fifteenth?
Yeah, we're postponing it to June fifteenth.
Well, Mr. Ellis, May eighteen.
Oh, you said May. I thought you said June fifteenth.
Well, I just looked at the next meeting date being May eighteenth on the agenda.
It's postponed to June fifteenth.
And I very much apologize.
No problem.
So I've been corrected. It's June fifteenth. The statement stands, but for the date, June fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. First up, ZB twenty-three dash zero six, PVA Investments, one forty-nine to one fifty-one, South Duster Drive, Block four twenty-eight, Lot eleven, Zone C four. We're looking at an amended site plan to build one eighteen-unit apartment building and one twenty-unit apartment building.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bob DeSanto. I'm back again for the board. This time for a minor modification of our site plan approvals were granted previously. We also are seeking your approval as the approving authority under your recreational use ordinance to permit us to do recreational facilities rather than being charged the F B under the ordinance. I would like the opportunity at the end of our presentation to address the board on the legal issues.
It's only part of your application, because that is part of your application. So it's not going to be separate from it. It's going to be part of it.
Just to be included.
So at some point, believe me, we'll bring it up, because we got to address it. So here we go.
Thank you. Thank you.
You have any other witnesses? Just Mr. DeVito? All right, well then, gentlemen, I ask each of you raise your right hand. And do each of you swear a firm testimony about to give is true and correct to the best of knowledge, information, and belief?
I do.
Thank you, fellows. Take it away, Mr. DeSanto.
Thank you. Mr. DeVito, you understand the purpose of tonight's application? I do, yes. Would you address the basis for the application tonight and the March thirty report from Land Dimensions? Say that again, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Would you address the basis of our application tonight and the March thirty report from Land Dimensions? I will, yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Larry DeVito, professional planner and Land Dimensions engineering. We were before the board previously with this application for PVA Investments to develop forty new apartment units plus renovate four existing. In the event of the various reviews, we revised the site plan. Have gone through the professional reviews of the prior application. The board actually approved the preliminary final site plan. And we subsequently revised it again. So the plan that's before you tonight is, in essence, the same project plan. Proposed apartments off of Delcy Drive on the same property. We have reduced the number of units from forty to thirty-eight. So we now have eighteen on the left and twenty on the right, and then a four-unit building that's existing that has been totally renovated. So we're now total of forty-two apartment units as part of the application. With that, we revised the parking. We reduced the impervious paving. We reduced, eliminated six of, or five of the existing parking spaces. We reduced the roof cover. We reduced the traffic generation, so it was less intense than what was previously reviewed. Our prior review, we looked at and gone over Mr. Casaboum's review letter and addressed his comments in his prior review. We are still status quo with having satisfied his comments, with the exception that we're less intensive development, less impervious, less strange, and so forth. Additionally, Ms. Adamson did a updated review, and I'll be happy to go through with her review. Our prior application, we had addressed her comments. She had readified her comments, so we can go through those with the board. But we're compliant and satisfied to address all of her comments in her report. Finally, we have incorporated, one of the comments of the prior review was recreation. The ordinance is, the borough's ordinance is a little, I won't say obscure, but it leaves options for the recreation. And the recreation stipulates for residential project, you're to set aside recreation improvements for seventy-five or less units. The recommendation is a basketball court. Because of the nature of the apartments and the intent to market to first-time young professionals, the basketball court did not seem as appropriate, as well as there's other athletic fields and recreation facilities in the vicinity that has those types of athletic complexes. So in lieu of that, we provided a recreation, more of a community area at the rear of the site. With that, we provided a bike rack, several benches, a gazebo, and a tether court for younger children to play. And asked the board to accept that in lieu of the basketball court for the recreation.
So, Mr. Chairman, I inquire, Mr. DeVito, just on that matter?
Yeah.
So, Mr. DeVito, I'm just looking at the ordinance, because I took a moment to take a look at it. And if I'm understanding it, and admittedly, it is a little more than, you know, typically you would see, but I'm looking at, of course, ordinance one zero seven dash fifty-eight point one, Recreation Improvements, which is probably what you were looking at. And I'm looking at five A, and five A talks about, "The minimum area required for recreational purposes shall be as follows," and they spoon-feed us, right?
Right.
"Single-family housing, five percent of the gross area tract, and other housing types," which would be those apartments, "seven point five percent of the gross area tract." Now, I just saw on area of tract, two thirty-two, nine thirty-eight, did a little arithmetic. And when I did that, it comes out to about two hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixteen square feet. Seven and a half percent is sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-one square feet, more or less. So you're saying that's what you propose? That's sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-one square feet of recreation?
We did not identify an area that contains sixteen thousand square feet. This is the rendering of the overall site, so the majority, probably close to forty-five to fifty percent of the property is open space. What we designated was a recreation area at the back of the site, which would be.
Well, remember, we're slaves to the ordinance now.
Right, right.
So.
So we will have more than, in excess than the sixteen thousand, nine hundred square feet of open space available for active recreation by the residents. Actually, improved, improvements is what I had listed that we were putting in that.
But you got to help me, and I apologize. I might be obtuse, because I'm just not seeing it. Just show us the sixteen thousand or something, square foot area.
Sixteen thousand square feet would take an area, probably something like this. I don't.
Right, well, some of that was woods that you, I mean, it's hard, because, you know, just with the pen. But obviously, can't be wooded area, so.
Correct, correct.
I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is, what you just indicated was parking lot, some of it.
No.
Yeah.
No?
If I misled you, so this area is all lawn area around here. This area is a wooded area that would could be have a walking trail or whatever would be in that as part and adjacent to the recreation, but it would not be the parking lot.
All right. Well, I've got an obligation to the board. Now, that's, we understand what, I think we understand what you're saying, but the board, obviously, will explore a little further if they have some questions. And now, they also give some options that if it feasibly or sensibly can't be done on-site, if it's up to seventy-five units, they talk about a three-thousand-dollar payment per unit. And again, simple arithmetic is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So I think that's what the board has to figure out. It does, and you've done a, you know, a workmanlike job, and you always do a wonderful job. But I don't know if this is expressed in enough detail or terms, but the board will tell us to make that kind of decision now, or whether they want to go in a different direction. I just wanted to push that out there, because that's kind of how I see it, and now I'll be quiet and you and the board can kind of talk about it.
Yeah, and just for the board, and at least with my presentation is, under the ordinance, it says, "Up to seventy-five units, active recreation with one basketball court and/or one pool and/or similar facility." So in looking at the apartment complex of forty-two resident that is really designed to accommodate young professionals, either the basketball court or pool would not be compatible or consistent with that occupancy at the complex. If anything, basketball courts are sometimes a nuisance, because people are playing basketball into the night. You have young families and young children. Would be more appropriate to have younger family-type recreation facilities. So our design was to accommodate that element, being a community recreation area. We have a horseshoe pit, that was the other item that we put in there, benches, gazebo, tether court for the children up against the open space area. So it is a more than aesthetic setting for that. And we're asking, and if I can define the sixteen thousand, five hundred square foot as reserved for the recreation, we're asking the board to consider that improvement for recreation in lieu of a basketball court or a swimming pool. Mr. DeVito, please remind the board the number of one-bedroom units out of this complex you called. The number of one-bedroom units? The number of one-bedroom units is, so, am I accurate? Right, thirty, thirty, out of the forty-two, thirty-one of them would be one-bedroom units. Eleven would be two-bedroom units. So the majority of the apartments are one-bedroom. Good, very good point.
This has been, what, the third time you guys have been here?
Fourth.
Fourth? Why hasn't this come up before? Is this just, it looks like it's an afterthought, and that it's just been thrown in? This is like your fourth visit here?
Well, we'd always thought.
Let me address this. Okay. Mr. Ellis recalls, from the beginning, it was said to us that we need to go to Borough Council for this issue. So what happened is John and I got together, we reviewed the ordinance, and the ordinance requires the approving authority to pass upon this. So that's why it's being included tonight. And Mr. Ellis and I conferred, and I believe he agrees, that this is the body.
Yeah, in Mr. DeSanto's defense, listen, no doubt that this application's been a little clumsy. Let's not kid ourselves. But having said all that, this ordinance's been out there. It hasn't been addressed squarely. Mr. DeSanto did want to talk to me about it, and I didn't have a chance to talk to him until just recently. In fact, just talked to him tonight about, kind of, you know, what the ordinance says. Now, the fact that I spoke to him, you know, more recently, was neither here nor there, because
The ordinance.
the ordinance is pretty clear, you know, kind of spells out what it spells out. So, but here we are. So this is the body that would make that call pursuant to the ordinance. Is Mr. DeSanto's ultimate point in that those discussions with the borough didn't find purchase, because it's really not the borough's fault?
Other than that, I think, you know, in essence, our plan, well, part of the prior review was that we did upgrade landscaping. We put a bus shelter out at the front entrance along the Delcy Drive frontage. So all other comments that the board professionals had recommended have been incorporated. I think the only thing that we had said we would, some of the landscaping requirements that were stipulated were per the redevelopment plan, which was for the central business district, and were not particularly applicable to this type of a setting with a parking area and so forth. And that we would mitigate supplemental landscaping, but as for deviation, we did ask for that as part of the prior approval, deviation from strict performance with the redevelopment plan landscaping requirements.
If I'm not mistaken, the ordinance also includes that it can't include wetlands or buffers, correct?
Well, that is in the ordinance, and that would be logical, whether it was in the ordinance or not.
Right.
That they speak to that, yeah, obviously, unavailable.
Anything else?
Unless the board would like to go over, Ms. Adamson's report, she would like to go over.
Okay. Chomping on the words, sure. Any thoughts from the board on this part of it?
I don't see a problem with it.
I don't either.
They've got, as we were reminded, I think, this is close to the Borough.
New Street, not the street.
All the part, the part, the senior citizens and the
South Delcy Drive.
and the soccer and the basketball. The basketball's right up against the street. So there's plenty of things in the, in the area, right?
Right, there is a recreation complex right there on Delcy Drive.
Okay, and I don't, I don't particularly see that it has to be either a pool or a basketball?
Basketball.
The two things. I mean, there's a lot of other things that people are involved in. Bocce ball and everything. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's a problem not having those two specific things, as long as there's things that are available to the, to the members of, to the.
Right, I mean.
Well, here's the deal. This is the fight. So it also talks about if onsite improvements don't really address the needs of the project, there is an option of a payment of three thousand dollars per unit in lieu of. And I don't know if that's clear in your mind, because on the one hand, you were suggesting that, hey, there's plenty of other stuff to do across the street, go play basketball, or do something else, or whatever, auguring in favor of the argument of the three-thousand-dollar payment, or you thought that it was just, hey, you know what, just forget the whole thing, and, you know, it's okay. But the ordinance doesn't let you forget the whole thing. It's kind of what I'm trying to say. I don't know if that helped you or shed any light on that.
I understand, but I'm okay.
Gentlemen. I would like to address the ordinance.
Okay.
Well, just the ordinance, huh? I don't see how long the other ones. Okay, fine. I think the first thing we have to look at is what's the purpose and intent of the ordinance? The purpose and intent of the ordinance is to have recreational facilities on the subject property. It's not for financial revenue. That's not the purpose of the ordinance. So you look at the big picture, you look at each case on its own merits, and decide what's being done here. We have a project which has thirty-one of the forty-two units, single, one-bedroom apartments. So you're going to have an adult community, pretty much. You're not going to have many children. The property is situated the way that it is, and I believe that we have tried to provide adequate recreational facilities for that property. We are also required on the ordinance to de-dedicate the area, and that could be in a condition of your approval, that it be defined, and we must de-dedicate it for recreational purposes, so that nothing can change down the road. It is originally for recreation and continues to be recreational purposes. So I think when you look at the big picture of things, whatever, that we are compliant with the ordinance, and we are compliant with the intent and purpose of the ordinance. And I realize that there's a lot of advantage to municipality. But the applicant here, folks, please keep in mind, we have the cost of the application, we have the cost of the professionals, the cost of your professionals, affordable housing, that's a significant number that we are paying to the borough. And to visit another hundred and twenty thousand on there is just revenue-seeking, but not purpose consistent with.
Affordable housing is a state obligation.
John, all I'm trying to say is that that's part.
Yeah, that's not us.
No, no, just in case there's a, there's a thought that this is a big money-making proposition for this applicant, and another hundred and twenty isn't going to make a difference. But I'm, John, please, I don't know that we're supposed to debate.
No, we're not. No.
So please.
We want to see this project be successful, obviously.
I understand, but all I'm saying to you, whether it's an obligation or not, it's still what the applicant has to pay. So I'm asking the board to please consider, as I keep saying, the big picture of things, that this hundred and twenty thousand would be a hardship in the big picture of things, because it's just another cost to the applicant. Where if we had no facilities here and no room for anything, then I can understand, because it's an alternative. The revenue is not the primary purpose. It's an alternative. It can't be done otherwise. And I think you have great discretion here to decide what is best for the borough in this particular situation. Thank you. I just, yeah, I mean, a little bit of different aspect of it was in my discussion with the applicant and the developer, was they're looking to create a quality neighborhood. And an amenity in the complex really is, is an amenity for their future residents. So if the residents are going to be, as we said, predominantly one-bedroom, young professionals, small families with starter children, an amenity is having that community, from a planning standpoint, having that little community space as a recreation space within the development, rather than going offsite. But that, that was our discussion in coming up with a plan, rather than a basketball court. Now, you could, everybody could put a basketball court and walk away, and no one ever, never uses it, or it becomes a nuisance. So that was our discussion on a land use plan for the recreation. But it really is a decision for the board to make. That's it? Nothing further?
Okay. Any questions yet, gentlemen? Misses? All right. Ms. Adamson.
Would you like me to stick to the subject that you were just on, just for a brief moment?
Yes, please.
I did a quick calculation, and, you know, it's kind of an irregular shape right there, but I calculated between twenty-five hundred and three thousand square feet of recreational area is provided. I'm talking about active recreation, not passive recreation, that would be in the wetlands and the wetlands buffer. So three, twenty-five hundred to three thousand square feet is provided, and the ordinance, based on seven and a half percent of the gross tract area, requires sixteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety square feet. So that's just for the board's consideration and making their determination. And the only other item that I had to go over that was different from the original application was the parking. There is a parking variance required with this application. The last letter that we had, which was dated January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, had a total parking requirement of eighty-one spaces, but eighty-five spaces were proposed. With the revised parking, seventy-eight spaces are required and seventy-five spaces are proposed. So we're going to need some justification on that variance that would be required, or the applicant has to go back to the drawing board and provide additional parking. So, Mr. DeVito, you have my letter, right? April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three?
Yes. I read your letter intently regarding the parking. And the way it reads is, if seventy-five spaces are proposed, eight make-ready spaces are required, and three E V charging spaces are required, the plan complies. And that is, in fact, what we do. So we have seventy-eight parking spaces required. If you take the credit from the E V spaces, that makes the requirement of seventy, and we're providing seventy-five parking spaces on-site.
I understand.
So we exceed the requirement.
Can you reflect that in your parking calculations on Sheet one as well?
Yes.
Okay.
It wasn't clear on the plan, but if you really understand what the requirements are for the E V and the make-ready spaces, and you take the credit for it, we exceed what the required parking is.
Mr. DeVito is correct. There is a credit for the E V charging spaces. So you've done that calculation. You will provide that calculation
I will, yes.
to my office and put it on the plans as well. So what does that bring the parking count to? Seventy, seventy-eight is required, and so what is that?
Seventy-five are provided.
Okay, so seventy-five is the new requirement based on the credit for the E V?
No, no, seventy, based on the credits.
No, no, seventy, based on the credit, seventy would be required.
Okay, seventy are required.
And we're providing seventy-five.
And you'll provide that calculation? Cause I can't do the math in my head right now.
That's okay.
I'm just telling you, I, I, I will not do math, uh, I'm polite. Um, thank you. That's all, that's the only comment that I had, and everything else is pretty much standard from the previous application. We did leave the waivers in the letter, because, uh, I guess to the extent necessary, they would need to get those waivers again, because this is an amended preliminary final site plan.
Mr. Castle.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have much to add. Uh, my, my review letter from January thirteenth, thirteenth, which covered one of the pri- the prior layout of, um, forty, forty-four units, forty-four, I guess, forty new units, all the engineering comments of, of, will carry through to this layout. Um, so I, I may be able to just continue with that letter for this layout.
Any questions from the board?
Well, there was a statement in which they said that they, uh, they met the ordinance. It was mentioned earlier that they met the ordinance, and as the calculations start coming up, and you look at exactly the area in which that was actually used for, um, sporting, it was equal to about three thousand. So we're actually, it's not meeting the ordinance, you know, from what I can see, as far as the numbers, it's not meeting the ordinance and, uh, I, just trying to not impose on the builders, but in that same aspect, working toward trying to have some kind of resolution here, in which that, being very earnest, you, you're not meeting the expectations of what was set in the ordinance, and, uh, we, we have to, rather than trying to just overlooking it, you know?
We can't overlook it.
No, no, no.
Not happening.
No, so, uh, that's, that's kind of what I'm wrestling with, just that, is there a way in which they would.
So perhaps, I have an idea.
Okay.
If you're interested?
I'm interested.
Okay. Um, thank you, Ms. Adamson, because she did a, just a quick calculation about, you know, with really kind of being inadequate with the twenty-five hundred, three thousand square feet. So maybe, cause look, i- it's a little difficult to kind of engineer in the middle of a meeting or kind of while you're talking about it at the same time. So perhaps what maybe the inevitable or inescapable option is to work with the board professionals, cause you, you got a big number you gotta come up with, sixteen thousand square feet, one way or another. So maybe you get that, you know, approval contingent on working with the board's professionals to the satisfaction of meeting the ordinance. And then if, you know, you're just here with the board professionals, because it's not enough room, you, you know, you've been pretty ambitious, there's not enough room or there's something else, then you might have to come back here, and then we gotta just hammer it out one night.
I, I, I.
But at least you'll have, have, run it up the flagpole.
For the board, I appreciate that. We, my, my belief is we can satisfy clearly the sixteen thousand five hundred square feet. It's not, not been identified by an exhibit that we sent here. Ms. Adamson scaled off the, scaled off the actual improved area, and, and that's probably close to.
Right, if it was fifteen thousand five hundred, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
I understand. So the, the real issue is just if the board would consider an approval subject to us working that out with the professionals, and if we can't, then it's either a payment in lieu or we come back if we cannot. A, B, the real, the real question for tonight's presentation was the supplementing of a different type of recreation improvement versus a basketball improvement. I mean, that, that, that is a substantial design element of the finished product of the, of the complex.
Well, you know, forgive me, Mr. DeVitro, you lost me. What do you mean that it's a substantial design element of the complex?
But, so the owners are, are envision creating a community atmosphere for young professionals, one-bedroom apartments, um, a quality living environment that was not geared for older young adults or young people to be playing basketball or having swimming.
Right, right.
But to have a community setting at the back of the development, that, you know, bike rack, play area, bench gazebo, you know, more of a community setting that, and everybody's business life, busy lives, take their children out as a totlock.
I understand.
You know?
I understand. Thank you.
Who knows?
I got you. Well, that was my idea, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the board? All right, this time I'd like to open this to the public. Do I have a motion open to the public?
Motion open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sylvia. Is there anybody from the public that has anything they would like to say on this matter? Seeing that nobody's come forward, do I have a motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Sylvia. It's the pleasure of the board.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, might I, can, it'd be okay if I just jump in with one more thing here?
Sure.
Before, before you discuss possibly a motion. Um, with, with everything we've just heard, it, it's obvious that the, the site is, is, um, you know, constrained in terms of how much, oh, free space, let's call it, is available for recreation. So if, if the board's decision ultimately is to defer to the professionals, I just wanted to suggest one idea, because I only see one real idea, and that's ma- basically, putting in some type of walking path, maybe from the, you know, from the existing apartments, really in the green space behind, you know, the apartments, and tying it in with where they have the active recreation, just to make a little, almost like an interior loop. That, that, I just wanted to, you know, mention that, because I don't see a whole lot of other options to get close to that sixteen thousand, and to have some type of walking path would be, um, probably the only real option, and that might be, you know, if, if the board approves and this goes forward, that might be what you end up seeing, if we have to work, the professionals work it out with the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Another position, yeah.
Okay. Are you ready for a motion?
Sure.
Got it.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, if I heard correctly, if they were willing to refer or work with the professionals and to resolve the issue, and, uh, once that's done, um, that, uh, that we go ahead and approve, uh, we're going to approve the, uh.
So, um, a motion to approve the amended site plan contingent on harring out that recreational ordinance, uh, HECA, so to speak.
Yeah, with the professionals.
All right.
I'll second that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. All call, please.
Mr. Harvey.
Four.
Mr. Santor.
Four.
Mr. Smith.
Four.
Ms. Wyman.
Four.
Mr. Lopez.
Four.
Ms. Camiola.
Four.
Mr. Mooning.
Four.
Thank you, members.
Thank you, good to see you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Mr. Hock, Mr. DeVitro.
Next up, ZB twenty-three dash zero-one, South Jersey Gas Company, one oh three Union Street, block sixty-two, blocks one and five. Zone I two and R two, preliminary and final site plan with bulk C variance to construct an array of ground-mounted solar panels.
Yeah, it's, it's better on the eyes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the board. Uh, my name is Michael Herbert, I'm with the law firm of Parker McKay. I represent, uh, South Jersey Industries, or also known as South Jersey Gas. Uh, we are here before you tonight to, uh, present an application to construct a ground-mounted solar array on the property. Uh, counsel, did, uh, the board want to take jurisdiction before I begin? How would you like to proceed?
Well, the, the board, you properly noticed, the board has jurisdiction, we welcome you, and if you have individuals that you would like sworn, we can do that at the same time, you can identify them, whatever you want to do.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have with us tonight Fred Roors, he is with South Jersey Gas, uh, Josh Hanahan, who is our engineer, and Stuart Weiser, our planner. So if you want to swear them in?
Well, well, sure. Uh, fellas, I ask each of you to raise your hand, right hand, and do each of you swear a firm testimony about the given truth and correct the best your knowledge of information, believe.
I do.
I do.
Thanks, fellas. Take it away.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, we, uh, with regard to this application, we have received, uh, the Remington and Vernick Engineering, uh, letter of January twenty-five, and the Sicily and Associates, uh, letter of February one, and, uh, you'll hear testimony from my, from our witnesses that we intend to comply with those letters. Uh, we are going to begin first with, uh, Fred Rose of South Jersey Industries. Uh, but before I begin, I just wanted to do a quick introductory and, uh, we'll go through it from there. Uh, also, I handed out, um, uh, some photographs of the site, just so that the board members have a perspective, like, uh, you know, the paper visiting of the site.
Well, sure, why don't we mark these A one, and A one will be basically, uh, one, two, uh, three, four. Four pages, uh, eight and a half, I love, five.
Four pages. Thank you. We also have a aerial of the site with the overlay showing the solar array. Would you like that as a six, I guess, or?
Well, no, no, A one's gonna be that, that collection of five photos, and that'll be A two.
A two, thank you.
There you go.
I see you marked it as A two, thank you. And the date of this, uh, document is, uh, three sixteen twenty-two.
And if you would have your witness identified for the record?
Sure, but before I be, I just wanted to give a quick introductory, then we're gonna be, you know, with our witnesses, if that is okay. Uh, this is a proposed use in a permitted principal, uh, use area, the I two industrial district. Uh, where, uh, utilities and utility structures and facilities are permitted as a conditional use also in the R two zones. We have two zones, the I two zone and the R two zone involved in this property. One is industrial, one is residential. In the R two, uh, it is a conditional use, but, uh, we do not meet all of the conditions, so you will hear testimony from our planner, uh, for the D variance, uh, because we don't meet all conditions. The applicant is also requesting, uh, various bulk variances, uh, for, in the I two zone, for, uh, front yard, we're proposing fifty feet, where sixty feet is required. And again, our engineer will lay this out, and then our planner will testify to these, uh, bulk variances. We need a variance for, uh, zero, uh, side yard setback, where sixty feet is required in the I two zone. A bulk variance for twenty-five foot rear setback, where sixty feet is required again in the I two zone. And again, in the I two zone, uh, we have a combined side yard setback variance, but, uh, we're gonna make an argument that that really is not part of this. Uh, and of course, in the R two zone, the, uh, we'll have the use variance along with the, uh, combined side yard setback, uh, fif- where we have fifteen feet and thirty feet is required. So, uh, this, uh, property, uh, is a property, again, owned by South Jersey Gas. The property is also surrounded by properties that are owned by South Jersey Gas. There is a one residential side to the property. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, you know, the site was, uh, previously remediated, and this is a, uh, typical, uh, use of a remediated property. So with that, I'm going to introduce, uh, Mr. Roors. Mr. Roors, good evening. Could you just introduce yourself to the, uh, to the, uh, board, uh, let them know, uh, who you, uh, work for, and, uh, and, uh, what we're gonna do here tonight?
Sure, uh, Fred Rose with South Jersey Industries. Uh, I'm the general manager of renewable and sustainable energy for the company, and I'm re- representing the applicant, South Jersey Gas.
Can you just spell your missing for me, please?
Rose, R O H S.
My apologies, I was mispronouncing it.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, so, uh, Mr. Rose, what are we, uh, proposing here?
So, a- as you can see, uh, based on exhibit A two, we are proposing on the two lots, lots one and five, as mentioned, a, a ground-mounted solar array on what is now a remediated, uh, contaminated site. So if anybody on the board is familiar with this location and the history of this location, quite a bit of work has been done over the last few years to clean up the site, decontaminate it, and what we're looking at now, uh, if you've been by there recently, it's a mostly grassed, open field area, and we would like to redevelop that with some, a, a clean, sustainable renewable energy facility, uh, as you said.
And, uh, if you could describe the operations of the site, how, how would this solar array, once it is constructed, how, how would you operate it?
Sure, so, uh, as is typical with, uh, an array of this nature, i- it's not actively staffed. Uh, there are no staff members that come here every day and operate it. Uh, it is remotely monitored with, uh, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and suspect days a year.
And when you say remotely monitored, meaning that the, the energy flow at the site, uh, is, is monitored, and if something fluctuates with that, you would get noticed right away?
Correct, correct. We're, we're actively monitoring all of the active equipment at the site, the panels, the inverters that are producing the energy, uh, the transformers that are pushing it back into the grid, constantly monitoring that. Uh, and if there are any issues, we receive alarms, uh, and if there were an issue at the site, we would dispatch somebody to go manage or, or maintain it.
And, uh, your, your staff, you've, given, you know, however many alerts or, or, uh, how it's measured, your staff would be visiting the site, uh, about once a week or so?
Uh, about once a month.
Once a month, okay.
More, more, more than likely, about once a month is, is typical.
And you have parking on the site for, uh, when it is visited?
Well, we do. Uh, as you can see from the site plan, we did leave a fairly decent area, uh, out in the, on the eastern portion of the site, along Union Street, uh, for access to the array, to the site in the future, and for, for parking if and when needed. It's more than ample for our needs, uh, but we're also trying to accommodate any possible future needs related to, uh, the ongoing management of our remediated site.
And this site is a low-maintenance site, is that correct?
That's correct.
So when we say low maintenance, what is required out there?
Uh, very, very little, if things are operating correctly. Once a year, we go through and we check out all of the equipment, use an IR imaging gun, make sure everything looks okay, that there's no alarms present, that means everything is functioning properly. Uh, typically, we will be out there about once a month to, to check on things, we'll monitor, uh, temperatures and possibly, uh, the transformers on the site as well. And during the summer season, we will be out there to maintain it about once a month for, uh, the vegetation in certain cases.
Right, these are, these panels are up off the ground, but on, uh, uh, stakes that are, are shoved into the ground, is that correct?
That, that's correct.
You shouldn't say shoved, or driven into the ground.
Vibrated in, yeah, so they're, they're steel posts that are vibrated into the ground, and the racking, as we call it, is bolted to that, and the panels sit upon that, uh, steel rack.
So really, most of the surface remains pervious?
Absolutely, yeah, it, it's, it's mostly going to remain, uh, not turf, we're proposing to actually seed the site with a pollinator-friendly mixture, so you're gonna see a lot more native vegetation, flowering vegetation.
And, uh, and so therefore, when the water hits the panels, it flows off into the ground, and, uh, it, there's not an issue?
That, that's correct, that's correct. It's, we should be improving, uh, the retention of stormwater at the site with this, yeah.
And, um, and, and we'll have our engineer testify as to stormwater, but this is just a preliminary introduction to that. Uh, security for the site, how does security work?
Sure, the, the site right now, uh, it's fully fenced with a locked, uh, gated security fence. We are proposing to maintain that, uh, and in addition to that, while we monitor the site and we can see if any equipment is malfunctioning, we are likely gonna have, uh, a camera on our equipment pad, which is located down here, uh, toward the, the southern area of the site. And what that camera allows us to do is, if we see anybody accessing the site, we can see who that is. If we have personnel on site, we can monitor what's going on with them for safety reasons, for health and, and safety reasons, we want to be able to see that. Uh, it also allows us to look at the site in the event there is an alarm, or we do get an issue on the monitoring system, we can instantaneously check the status of the ring.
And can you just point out very quickly, what's around the site?
Sure, so to, to the north, we have, uh, what is a, a flagline. Sure, so to, to the north, we have what is a flag line, that is the railroad right of way property. And immediately on the other side of that, this is actually our property. And we do have another exhibit that I could probably go through to detail on.
Yeah, I think we're having our engineer go through, I just want you to briefly introduce the board to what's, what's there in the South Jersey owns of the property.
Sure, which is, it's largely wooded on, on the west side to the north side. Here to the southwest, we have another wooded lot, which we're butting up against the rail right of way there. Looking east, if you look across the median here on Union Street, this is actually our South Jersey Gas division office. We recently did put solar at this location as well. We have a carport, which you can see on the site plan, a roof array at that location as well. And this median area has been recently improved as well, where South Jersey Gas owns these properties here as well. There were residences there, because of the contamination, we acquired those properties, we demolished the houses, and these are now very nicely maintained grass, grass areas on the site.
And if you were to go up to the site today, you would see the fence with the, with the barbed wire on the fence?
That, that's correct.
And I think everyone has the pictures, A1. If you turn to the second page of A1, that would be the fence with the slots, the slats in the fence. So that's the way it would look. The third page is the, that is where the electronics pad will be, or the machine pad?
Yeah, looking into the site, and that's, I mean, you're looking at the entirety of, of the site there, looking past to this, this back tree wooded area. It's, it's a flat, level, perfect location for ground array, ground solar array.
And the following page shows this what? And you took these photographs, I think?
Yeah, yes, these were taken by our project manager, Dan Strick. This is, the, the next photograph is actually across the street, looking, I guess, north onto the site. And what that's showing you is, there, there recently were some utility poles installed between the sidewalk and our fence, and it's detailing the condition of the road, the condition of the sidewalk, the condition of the fence, which all of those elements were recently replaced by South Jersey Gas as part of their remediation effort. So Union Street was torn up, the sidewalk was torn out, the whole site was refenced, and everything was replaced as, as part of that project.
And then the last page shows this what? Again, that's the fence with the slats?
With the slat, yeah, that would be a, a view of what you can see with a slatted fence to buffer the visual nature of the project.
Thank you. Finally, noise from the site, noise and glare, any, any issue with that at all?
No, these are passive sites, they make no noise, there is no rotating machinery, there's no moving parts to this. Solar panels use sunlight to generate electricity, it, it's generated through the inverter. Nothing is, is moving, whirring, buzzing. There's really no sound whatsoever coming from the site, even when it is in, in operation. There's no emissions whatsoever.
And the panels are there really to absorb the sunlight, so glare is not an issue either?
Correct, so the, the way solar panels are designed, they're designed to absorb the light, that's how they generate their power. So in addition to having, the glass is designed to not allow that light to dissipate off, it's designed to capture it. There's anti-glare coatings on these panels, so that it actually keeps that light within them. And what's more common now is to have what are called bifacial solar panels. So the, it's, it's two glass sheets, so the light passes, whatever is not being captured by the cells there to generate energy, actually passes through the panel and hits the ground. It's designed to hit the, in this case, it would be the grass, and there's some limited amount of that comes back up, and it's reabsorbed by the solar panels, so they're more efficient than previous ones were. But glare has largely been eliminated, it's, we don't want that, we want to capture as much of that light as possible.
I think that's it, anything else that you wanted to tell the board about the site?
No, that's, that's for now.
Thank you.
Unless there's any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Mr. Chairman, just the witnesses, you're, is, is free to, free to question, free to.
Any questions?
I have a question. What's the whole idea of this, because South Jersey Gas, is this to sell it back to the electric company?
Yeah, sure, so, so this array would be connected to the electric grid, that, that's right. So there's no onsite load to what's called net meter, so if you have solar on your house, that's net metering, where your, your system is really powering a load behind a utility meter, and that's what we did across the street. So we have an active facility there with an electric meter that's utilizing energy, that's a net metered system. This, there's, there's no load here to offset. So the way this is designed is it hooks directly into the Atlantic City electric system, and that energy feeds the grid, and it powers the surrounding community.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Rose. Okay, Mr. Chairman, our next witness is going to be our engineer, that's Josh Hanahan. Josh Hanahan, how are you?
How you doing? You did my work for me.
There you go.
Well, Fred did.
And Mr. Hanahan, if you could just tell the board your education, your credentials, and how many boards you've had in front of it and so forth?
Yes, I'm a site civil engineer, graduated from the University of Pittsburgh. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I have about sixteen years of experience, and I've testified before dozens of boards in the state of New Jersey.
Okay.
Well, you sound great, but could you just keep your voice up a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, just help us out, because we got a lot of people here.
It'd be better if you sat at the mic, or me?
Nah.
Just, just, you're great, you know, you're just.
I'm in old swim coach.
Speak a little louder, there you go.
We can hear you no matter.
Channel, channel your attorney a little bit, and go, go with that, thank you.
All right. Chairman, if you could, again, I know we oriented the site somewhat, but from an engineering standpoint, if you could just point out, you know, we, we've got the aerial in front of you, A2. If you could just describe in more specifics as to what's at the site and what's around it?
Yes, the, the site is a five point six acre site. It's known as lots one and five with block sixty-two. It's a, the site address is one oh three Union Street. The site fronts, is fronted by Union Street to the east, and single family residential to the south. There is an existing rail line to the southwest. And then to the north and west, as Fred had indicated, there's a, a con rail right of way that is all vacant and mostly wooded. And that kind of gives you a, a good idea of the surrounding that we have. What I wanted to show in the other exhibits is there's the zoning and the SJI owned property.
We have a zoning map, I think we're on A.
A3.
A3.
Sure.
And then after that will be a tax map, that'll be A4, with your permission. Okay, what are we looking at, Mr. Hanahan?
So this is an overlay of the Glassboro tax map, showing our site indicated here in the hatched darker area. You can see here that the north lot five is located within the I2 industrial zone, and then the southerly lot one is within the R2 medium density residential zone. You can see across the street, there's all the, that is still the industrial zone uses, and also to the north and west is industrial, with the residential just being to the south and southeast of the site.
And then if we could just pull up the tax map? And again, that is A4. What is the date of the tax map? I, I should have given A3's date as well.
A3's date is March seventeenth.
Sixteenth.
Oh, there is a revision to it.
A revision seventeen, okay, seventeenth, March seventeenth, sixteenth and seventeenth revision. The date here is.
Is February.
Yeah, it just says February of twenty twenty-three.
All right, so the.
And actually, let me turn this, so it has the same orientation of our other maps.
The tax map is February two thousand twenty-three.
So these green shaded properties are the SJI owned properties in the area. So you can see that they do, this is the entire con rail right of way, and then the project, the property to the north of that is their property. Most of the properties across the street are either vacant or owned by SJI or both, and they also own some properties across the railway to the south. So there, so there really only are a few occupied residential properties to the south of, of this site.
Okay, if we could go back to the site plan? And I, I, again, we, we had a summary from Mr. Rose, but from an engineering standpoint, if you could just describe what we're doing at the site?
So the site is a one point seven megawatt ground mounted solar array. As Fred had discussed, it's high beams that are driven in the ground with the wrapping system mounted to it. The solar panels are about three feet off the ground in the front, about seven point eight, just under eight feet in the back of the panels. Everything is connected within the area of the array with underground conduit, and then it is all connected to an equipment pad that has a disconnect and switch here. And then this electrical service goes above ground to overhead poles for the interconnection to the grid, to Atlantic City electricity, to their grid. And as Fred had stated before, this is not a net metered system. This is just going to feed power into the grid. There is no load on the site right now for this to supplement. There's about thirty-one hundred panels as part of it too, and as Fred had testified, there is gaps between all the panels, so that the water can still, you know, flow to the ground and interact with the ground as it normally would. So solar panels are considered pervious, and we are going to change all the turf grass in the area of the array to a polyurethane mix, which improves the site runoff from the site. It will decrease runoff coming from the site because of that. And we provided that in our revised stormwater report.
Okay, I know we had a couple of bulk variances that we had to go over. I described them very briefly, but if you could just point to them on the, to the board and what exactly we're looking at. I know for the I2, we had the fifty foot front yard where sixty feet is required.
Yeah, that was on the older plan, so we've revised that for our plan that we've submitted before the board now. So now we comply with the front setback, so we are meeting the sixty foot front setback. We do have, because of the shared lot configuration, we do have a zero foot side yard in the industrial where sixty foot side yard is required. We have a twenty-five foot rear side yard setback where sixty feet is required. And we also are, we are not providing any landscaped area in the industrial lot, although there is a fifteen percent landscape requirement. And then on the residential lot, there is the shared lot line, once again. We have a zero foot side yard setback where fifteen is required. And there was, there was another variance listed for a combined side yard of thirty feet required, but we actually do comply with that now. We have a thirty-five foot side yard setback on that side, so our combined side yard is thirty-five feet where thirty is required.
Thank you. Okay, we briefly spoke about water flowing off of the panels and onto the site, and the pollinator mix assisting with getting the water back injected into the ground. But again, if you could just review stormwater overall from an engineering standpoint with the board?
Yeah, so we are not changing any drainage patterns, there's no grading that is associated with this. Like I said, there will be gaps in the panels, the water will be able to flow through and interact with the ground as it normally would. The change from the turf grass to metal mix will improve the condition. We are keeping all of this gravel and the, the existing driveway all in place, nothing is changing. The only increase in pervious is the very minimal increase for the equipment pad, which is almost negligible. And after working with the engine, the board engineer's office, we did add another inlet to the northeast corner of our site to capture some runoff and get it underground and get it into the system along Union Street, just to alleviate some surface runoff that's in that area, because there is some flooding up there. But we, this project will not be contributing anymore to that or anything. We just wanted to work with the board engineer and try to do something, because that was one of their recommendations.
Lighting on the site, do we have any lighting?
No lighting is proposed. No, no trash or any sort of trash related collection or anything like that.
So basically, it's just a solar field?
Yep.
Correct.
All right. In the Sickles and Associates' report, February one, I know that, I guess, the, the one large issue that's out there, and we'll go into Sickles' report, it really is. We have been working with the county with regard to the site. If you could just explain to the board what the interaction with the county is, and, you know, and how that does affect the site?
Yes, the county has some plans to do different roadway expansions and reconfigurations through, in this area, and they would like to, one of their options that they have presented would be to use a portion of this residential lot for their roadway improvements, but there's been several options that they've been throwing out there, they've been talking about it for years, they have not made anything public, so we do not know what the, you know, basically what the situation is with the county. And we, we do not want to continue to wait for them, we would like to develop this, but that is the case with the latest that we're hearing.
And if the county does come back and they do need to use some of the property, we would come back to the board for amended site?
Yes, that is true.
And we understand, and the county can be that way.
Yeah.
It happens.
Thank you, thank you. With regard to Sickles and Associates' report, I, I understand we're looking to comply with pretty much everything on there, and there are a couple of things that we, we can't comply with, irrigation being one of them?
Yes, we are, we are not providing any irrigation on the site. We are providing some doubles, a double staggered row of green giant arbor ID evergreens along the south side to screen us from the residences, the south facing residences there. But these will all be watered and maintained by South Jersey Gas.
And I know there was a request for consolidation of the lots?
Yes, that is something that we would consider if the, the board would, you know, would request that, then that is, that is something that South Jersey Gas is open to.
Anything else in the Sickles' report that you need to address?
I don't think so. The other buffering that we would have is to do the privacy slats along the entire frontage, so you would have the green privacy slats to screen the development from the roadway. But as I discussed, there really are no residences across the street.
And I know Ms. Adamson is also, from Remington Vernick, has also put together a report of January twenty-five, and I, I know she wanted us to address various items. One, one is effect upon neighboring properties. There's already like a couple of residential properties that are, would be, not even impacted, but, you know.
Yeah, there, there are two residential properties to the south of us, and two more like to the south, what, southeast of the property, but.
They were doing a lot of buffering over there.
Yeah, but those all, all, all of their sight lines would be buffered by the evergreen row that we had installed, so.
Right, and, you know, there's always a concern about the character of the neighborhood. The argument is, this is a solar array going on what was previously industrial property, so if there's really no, no change in the character, probably, I would argue, and again, we'll have our planner testify to that as well, but argue it's an upgrade. And we, you know, we talked about, if the property is clearly suitable for the intended use, and it serves the best interest of township, again, Mr. Weiser will address that as well. Public sewer and facilities, it's not a concern here.
Yeah.
And we talked about drainage, and of course, traffic is not an issue either, because we're not affecting the road in any way, so. Anything else in Mrs. Adamson's report, Ms. Adamson's report that you need to address?
No, I don't believe so.
All right. Anything else that you wanted to address with the board?
No, I think that's what covered it.
Thank you. My engineer is available for questioning if you need. Any board have any questions?
I have a question. Is there any type of danger with a field that big to a few residents that live close by?
No, it will, will be remotely monitored, like twenty-four seven.
I mean, let's say like there was a big storm, lightning or anything, does it propose any kind of, does it infringe on those people in any way?
No, not in any way, and there is a disconnect at the equipment pad, so if there was any issue and they had to disconnect the array, they could. But the, the distance from the residences, they, they will not be impacted, yeah.
Any other questions? Moving right along, we have our planner, Mr. Weiser is next.
Thank you, good evening, board members.
Mr. Weiser, if you could just place your credentials upon the record?
Sure, so my name is Stuart Weiser. I am the Vice President of Planning and Environmental Services for ARH Associates. We're located in Abington, New Jersey. I'm a professional, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I also hold the AICP national certification as a, a city planner. I have been practicing arguably since I graduated college in nineteen eighty-eight. I got my planner's license in two thousand, both cert, the license and the certificate in two thousand. Since then, I've appeared before many, many, many boards over the course of time, some as representing boards, as the board professional. I actually sat with Ms. Adamson on a number of boards over the course of time. Other times, I have represented boards in this current capacity.
Well, she's vouching for you, so.
She's vouching for you, so.
I think, I think.
Yeah, she smiled. She didn't frown, so that's as good as.
So she frowns, we're in trouble.
There you go, right, 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 right. So you're good, you're good.
As you all know, Mr. Weiser comes from my, the old swim coach school of voice projections.
It's working fine.
I can hear him perfectly.
Mr. Chair, if you'll accept Mr. Weiser?
I accept.
Thank you. And Mr. Weiser, I know that you have prepared a, your testimony with regard to both the use variance and the bulk variances. So if you could review that with the board?
Sure, so as part of my preparation for this evening, I reviewed the plans and the testimony that was prepared by my colleagues here. I undertook a site visit. I reviewed your two thousand four and two thousand twenty, your two thousand four master plan and two thousand twenty master plan reexamination. And I reviewed the ordinance that relates to these two zones. As we indicated, we're here tonight for a use variance, preliminary and final major site plan, and some bulk variances. I'm trying to go through so I don't have to reiterate what my colleagues have said. We have the larger portion of the site is the I two industrial zone. The smaller portion of the site, what they've called the industrial, or the residential lot, is R two medium density residential. Solar as a utility facility is a permitted use in the I two zone. It is a permitted conditional use in the R two zone. And unfortunately, you have, not unfortunately that you have them, but you have several conditions that are related to the conditional use, which we do not meet. So one of the conditions is that the solar be limited to provide direct service to a use. In this case, we don't, we go spill our electricity right into the grid. So that doesn't, doesn't comply. Facilities should be placed underground. Obviously, we're a solar facility. We can't place underground. Any utilities servicing the facility need to be underground. We do have, most of our facilities are underground, but we do tap into the Atlantic City Electric grid. The interconnection is above ground, so we do have to rise up, so we meet that interconnection. And utility use is located outside of a right-of-way, so on a lot shall meet the bulk regulations for detached single-family dwelling. As you've heard already this evening, we do need some C variances. So because of not meeting the, the requirements of, or the conditions rather, of the use in the R two zone, we require D three relief under the municipal land use law for the R two zone. We have reviewed Ms. Adamson's report in terms of the planning. And she talked about the requirement of the granting of a D three variance. And she talked about the positive, negative criteria, which this board has seen many, many times. All of your applications for variance relief have to address the positive criteria. In this case, we believe that we satisfy cri, purpose of zoning municipal land use law. Purpose A, to encourage municipal action, to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner that will promote the public health, safety morals, and general welfare. Clearly, clean renewable electric promotes the general welfare. To promote, the second purpose of zoning that we believe that we, we satisfy is purpose J, to promote the conservation of, and I'll, I'll truncate this a little bit, energy resources to prevent urban sprawl and degradation of the environment through improper use of the land. Obviously, we're creating energy here. We are capturing the solar energy, converting it to electricity. So that satisfies the energy resources prong of purpose of zoning J. We also have purpose of zoning N, as in Nancy, which is to promote the utilization of renewable energy resources. Obviously, with what we're doing here, that speaks for itself. The negative criteria, we're required to address any detriment to the municipal zone plan, it's the borough's master plan, and the general welfare. So your two thousand and four master plan speaks to promoting, speaks to the borough being consistent with the various purposes of zoning under the municipal land use law. As we just said, there are three of them, one of which is promoting the utilization of renewable energy resources. So we believe that we are consistent with the master plan goals in that, in that respect. The master plan also speaks, it includes a natural resources conservation plan element. And one of the sections in there talks about energy efficiency. And it speaks to providing a means for solar access as appropriate. Obviously, we're doing that. To maximize the recycling of energy through resource recovery, again, that is what this is all about. And to encourage the use of energy-efficient devices such as heat pumps and geothermal pumps where feasible. I'm not sure that that fits a hundred percent, but I'm a planner. I like to throw in as much as, as I can. But we do think we conform with the spirit, if not the language of that problem. We also looked at your two thousand twenty master plan reexamination. And in the respect of this application, it's silent on solar. So there's nothing there for us to conform to. Those are the traditional positive and negative criterias that you're used to hearing about. In November, however, in November two thousand nine, the legislature amended the definition section of the municipal land use law to add the concept of an inherently beneficial use. And the definition of an inherently beneficial use is a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare. Such a use includes, but is not limited to, a hospital, school, childcare center, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And solar or photovoltaic energy facilities or structures. So under that definition, by definition, we are an inherently beneficial use under the municipal land use law. If a use is held to be inherently beneficial, it presumptively satisfies the positive criteria for the grant of a variance. That's both for the positive criteria required for D variances as well as the positive criteria required for C variances. So while we went through a couple of the purposes of zoning, we bootstrapped and suspended it. I think under the appropriate standard for this type of variance or for variance relief for this type of project, we respectfully submit that we didn't need to do that, but we wanted to do it for the record. In terms of the negative criteria, the court has modified the standard for the negative criteria for inherently beneficial uses by establishing what is termed the S I C A balancing test. And under that test, we are required to establish for you, or identify for you, the public's interest at stake of the project. So we submit that the public interest at stake for this project is the environmental benefits of generating electricity via green, sustainable, renewable means, which is in furtherance of the New Jersey Energy Master Plan. In addition, both D E P and the Board of Public Utilities consider contaminated sites as preferential location, preferred locations for the location of solar facilities, for the sighting of solar facilities. So we meet that public interest in those two ways. We are then required to identify any detrimental effects that would result from the granting of the variance. The, as we've heard earlier, the solar field doesn't generate any noise, no odor, no fumes, no emissions. It is totally passive in terms of the activity, or lack of activity, I should say, that goes on there. So with that respect, the only effects that we may consider detrimental is the impact to views from outside of the lots caused by the solar panels. We haven't identified any other detrimental effects. We are then, I'm sorry, we have not identified any other detrimental effects. We are then required. Bear with me a second, I'm sorry. I'm trying not to be redundant. We are then required to discuss whether we could reduce any of the detrimental effects by the board imposing on South Jersey Industries reasonable conditions. South Jersey Gas has anticipated that, and they have set the solar panels back from the property lines a considerable distance. And they, we've already talked about adding the vinyl slats to the Union Street fence line. What that will do in effect is screen those solar panels from anybody looking through the fence. The slats will screen that from, from the solar panels from view. Also, given the setback that South Jersey Gas, South Jersey Industries has set the solar panels back, the angle of view and the height of the panels, you, you may only see just the tip-top of a panel depending on where you're standing at any point in time. So we've anticipated what conditions might be imposed by the board, and we believe that we have addressed them to the extent possible and necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Weiser.
Then, one more thing, one more thing.
Oh, it's not going to be that easy, counsel.
Having.
I'm married to a planner, I don't have a job.
The last thing that needs to happen is your job, you as the board, need to measure and weigh, balance the detriment against, to, to the extent there is any, against the public interest of the project. And then determine whether there would be any substantial detriment to the public that is not outweighed by the, the benefit of the project in providing the clean electricity. That is your job to weigh those. We don't believe there are. We believe this is a total positive for the community and for the environment. He's looking at his watch, so I will say thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That being said, any other questions?
I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further witnesses. We, if anyone has any further questions, of any of the witnesses, they are available. I can turn it over, you know, if you want to turn it over to your professionals, we'd be glad to ask, answer any of their questions. Ms. Adamson.
We have a letter dated January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. And the zoning tables, Mr. Weiser or Mr. Hammer, can you complete the T B Ds on the plans? In other words, some of, some of the items haven't been completed on the plans. Can you complete those as a condition of approval?
I, I believe that we sent the April fifth letter in, and I, I think we did agree to them, but Mr. Hammer. Hannah, if you could just address that.
Yeah, I haven't had an opportunity to really go through those plans.
Yeah, we, we updated the plans with the landscaping percentage. And there will be parking spaces provided within the gravel area to remain. I believe those were the two items.
Okay, and the T B Ds on the table will be completed?
Yes.
In, in our letter. So we note that the, the minimum percentage of landscape area is two percent, two and a half percent, where fifteen percent is required. And we, we can discuss that later on because I would like to see additional landscaping. There is a residence on the north side of the property, way on the north side, I guess across from the South Jersey property. So I would like to see some additional screening.
We, we have the existing, the existing wooded area to the north would screen us from that property.
Unfortunately, I don't.
Are you looking, they're referring Melanie to this exhibit here.
This, which is also.
Yeah, I was just out there today, and I, unfortunately, the plans don't show it, and I did not see that wooded area. Might, might I have been blind?
We would never accuse you of that.
Yeah, there, I know there is an existing residence. What I'm going to ask you to do is show on your plans that wooded area, that wood line, because I do not see it.
Okay, on the survey basement?
And unfortunately, I did not bring my photos with me.
Yeah, no problem. And this, this exhibit is part of the site plan set also. This is sheet four of the set.
And so how thick are the, is that wooded area? And what, what does it consist of?
It's a, it's a mix of both evergreens and deciduous, like shrubs and trees, from what I remember being out there. And that lot is thirty-three feet wide, and it's about, I would say it's probably about a twenty, twenty-five foot wide wooded buffer.
And does the buffer, is it on your property or is it on their property?
It's on the, they have a rail right-of-way property, yeah.
Okay, I still would request a double row similar to what you have on the south side to buffer that property. That's my recommendation.
That, that's his area down here, Ms. Adamson, is that correct?
Yeah, you have a double, a double row of, row of arborides on the south side. I would recommend the same on the north side on your property, not on the, you know, the, the other, on the site, basically.
I think we could work with. So you also have the option of this property to.
Yeah, they, they have another property to the north, so this lot is also. Yeah, would it be okay if we buffered within that S J I lot?
Yes, that, that's acceptable.
As well, so it would probably provide you with an even better buffer, yeah.
I would have no issue with that. So then moving through the letter, you have covered quite a few of my items on page five. You've gone through some testimony. So I'm going to go through my remaining comments based on the testimony that was provided. So you said that there was parking available on the east side. Can you show on the plans the limit of the stone that will remain?
So all the stone will remain, but the area within the entire front setback, that first sixty feet will be open gravel that can still be used for parking. So all the gravel is going to stay, but the array will take up like the western portion of that gravel.
And you'll show that on the plans?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So number D one, we're talking about green, green arborid. We had recommended a different species.
And we can work with your office for whatever you recommend.
Okay, so you'll just agree to work with us?
All right, the applicant will just agree to work to finalize, to finalize the buffering plan, so to speak.
There are some lines, some overhead lines who want to make certain, certain there's no conflict.
Oh, that's true.
And number two, D two, is landscaping to be placed outside of the fence. So there's a, a fence buffer that's required, basically to buffer the fence, because it's a chain of defense, it's got privacy slab. And given that this is a residential area, we were recommending buffering on the street side of the fence, not, not inside your property. But I, I understand, I read, I read the response letter, there's no space out there to do that.
Very limited space between the fence and the sidewalk.
Can, can you give the board some testimony on that? How much space is available between the fence that's out there now and the sidewalk? And any possibilities of moving that fence along the front back to provide that buffer?
So, yeah.
Just along the front? Just along the front?
The fence they just installed?
Yeah, the fence they just installed.
Just wanna make sure I got the right one.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, so the photo, the supplemental.
Looking at A one.
Uh, yeah, that we handed out, exhibit A one, uh, that, that was designed, uh, partially to, uh, speak to Mrs. Adamson's, uh, uh, comments in her letter, to show the spacing between the fence and the sidewalk and the road. Uh, all that work was recently completed. And, and just to speak a bit further to the way we designed, uh, the site, and, and one of the reasons why we would prefer not to move the fence, uh, is this is an accessway, this is not an application that in, in any way represents, uh, the remediation activities at the site. But we do need to work within the constraints of, of ongoing, uh, monitoring here. So there are wells at the site, there's a, a future, uh, building here to the north, that's why there's cutouts to the north side of the site bank. We wanna be able to allow that access to, to that area. So we prefer not to move the fence, we would prefer to slat it. Uh, and, and as the photos show, I mean, if there were room, we'd be happy to do so. Um, there, I, I think there's maybe a, a foot or, or two to maybe three feet between the sidewalk and the fence. And as, as they did show, there's utility poles there, uh, I, there, there's likely some other, uh, utilities underground as, as well. So it's, there's signage by the street side, it's a very crowded area, which is why we thought slating the fence would, would be the most opportune, uh, situation for the site.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna leave that up to the board. You know, our recommendation is given that this is a residential area, that that fence be moved back and that the trees, not trees, uh, arborvitae's be provided in front of the fence along Union Street only. Not along the entire property, but just along Union Street. So if they move the fence back to let's say twenty-five feet and then put the double staggered row in front of the fence, there would be some more of a residential feel to this site. So, um, that's our recommendation there. We'll see what the board wants to do with it. Um, so moving along to comment number four. Once again, so recommendation of the vinyl fence, they did provide a fence with slats. And I, I understand that it's because of the type of use, there's, you can't provide a decorative fence, it has to be chain link, is that correct?
Yeah.
For security reasons.
Yeah, with the hard wire for security reasons, yeah.
Uh, number nine, I had circled that, um, that's the buffer area that's required along all lot lines that separate the non-residential zoning district from the residential zoning district. Can you go through where you were providing that buffer along the residential zoning district? And where you're requesting a waiver? So where, where, what's the extent of the zoning district so that the board understands? And so that, you know, we're, we're more able to see that. And you provided some buffer, I see.
Yeah, so thi- this is our site down here, these last three lots below us are residential. And then just across the street from only that, uh, block one, that's southerly block one, is also residential. So we have buffered to all, you can see it on the area here, these are all the remaining existing residential uses and we've buffered from here to here to buffer to all of those. And all the other areas where we don't have a landscape buffer is vacant land, mostly owned by SJI across the street.
And the applicant has provided testimony, um, lighting, n- no lighting, uh, at night, nothing?
No, no lighting is needed.
Trash disposal.
Yeah, no trash.
Number I two talks about fences. Fences up to eight feet tall shall be screened from nearby and res- uh, nearby streets and residential neighborhoods. So to the extent necessary, they're proposing screening instead of actual plantings to buffer the fence. And, um, number three, fence buffering shall be in accordance with section one oh seven dash forty-eight. Once again, they're not, uh, asking to do the defense buffering, they're gonna do the slats and layover the fence buffering. So that's, that's the extent of our letter. Um, most, most important, I think, is the fact that this is a residential area. And I do believe that that fence buffering should be provided. Um, I don't think that the slats along this chain of fence are very visually appealing. Um, but I'm gonna leave that up to the board.
Uh, and board members, I, we understand Ms. Adamson's, uh, concerns and, as you said, neighborhood area. Uh, Mr. Rose, if you could just explain, what is across the street from, uh, the, the fence would be? Uh, again, and just, just point out, yes, it is quote-unquote a neighborhood, but it really is something different.
Sure, so these, these, uh, properties that, that you can see in the site plan are now vacant lots. Um, they, they were homes, they are in industrial zone, they're industrial zone. Um, and they are owned by South Jersey Gas and they will not be residences again. They were contaminated sites, they were remediated and they, they cannot be further developed, this is, this is in the future.
And that's what you referenced at the front end of your application?
Yeah.
And that's why we put that in.
No, no.
We understand Ms. Adamson's concerns, you know, she, you know, she wrote a, a terrific letter. Uh, and, you know, she's trying to adhere with, with the ordinances, uh, as, as stated. But I, I think our argument, and again, it's up to the board, but our argument would be that, yes, you want that neighborhood feel, but really that's the area down here. This area is more industrial, I mean, this, the industrial zone does start up here as it is. All these properties are owned by South Jersey Gas Industries and there's, there's not, there's really not that neighborhood feel here. It, you know, there is a continuation up here of some more residences, but for this area here, that's more of a, of a, of an open industrial area.
And, and I think, just if I can speak freely, I think we'd be open to work with the planner if there's something.
Well, you're gonna work on the landscaping plan to finalize it. Nobody on the board's been barking or really kinda jumping up and down about this, so, um, bring it along.
Yeah, sure.
All right, Mr. Cosbone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just three things I wanted to mention. Um, just back to the county, what is your intent to, with the county discussion you had, is your intent to, um, seek, seek, if the board is to approve this tonight, seek, um, are you going to wait until the county makes a decision or?
The applicant requested, Mr. Cosbone, and, and I, there's been a lot going on. If I understood things, they'll correct me, that we move forward tonight. And if the county weighs in and it substantively affects their project and what they may or may not do, they may have to come back on an amended. Is that a fair recollection?
That is fair, I mean, well, well said, counsel. If, if for some reason we do build the facility and all of a sudden the county decides they wanna put in, uh, you know, this, the, the road over in this area, these solar panels can be lifted out of the ground and we would come back to you for amended site plan.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, if you were gonna wait to start construction until the county decided or you would, you would.
I think they were saying that they'd been waiting, waiting and waiting and they're tired of waiting.
It is, it is an excellent question and, you know, the job of the, of course, the job of the engineer is to make sure this is taken care of. As you said, we've been waiting and waiting, we don't know when the county will decide. We may, you know, we're gonna probably build this in about a year. If the county decides before then, then we'll come back. If they decide after, then we'll come back as well.
Okay.
That's, thank, thank you for the time, that's kinda what I wanted to know, thank you. Um, two other quick ones, there are some utilities on, underground utilities. So have you coordinated, I guess, with your client on, you know, the underground electric line and a few other lines, um, that are on the site?
What, can you confirm?
Yeah, running, the, the, the existing conditions planned in the survey does show underground utilities on the property, in the grass area, and an electric panel.
Those are, yeah, those are gonna be relocated, that is the purpose, I believe, of the poles that were installed at the street. Those are being moved off of the, the site onto the street side.
And then the last one, the electric, um, the, the, the electrical pad out there, is there any vehicular access needed to get to that pad? It's, it's locate, it's gonna be proposed in the grass as it is right now.
That, that's correct and that's common of, on, on solar installations, there is access. So coming into the gate, there's plenty of room between where the array starts and where that pad is at to drive a truck up to it if, if necessary.
Okay. Thank you. That's all that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great.
Any questions from the board? Do I have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so be it. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this project? All right, with nobody coming forward, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
I have a motion to close, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so be it. It's the pleasure of the board.
I would vote that, uh, that we approve the application with the items that our attorney has brought to.
Certainly, so Ms. Camiola, if you're talking about what the, what the request of relief would be, motion to approve the preliminary final site plan with the bulk variances, um, as spread on the record, in addition to that use variance because of that zoning issue.
Right.
That's a fair summary?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, do I have a second? All right, first and second, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Harvey?
Four.
Mr. Santor?
Uh, yes.
Miss, Mr. Smith?
I'm sorry, I'm asleep.
Ms. Swiman?
At four.
Mr. Lopez?
Four.
Ms. Camiola?
Four.
Mr. Muniz?
Four. Congratulations.
Thank you, board members and Mr. Chairman. Uh, I really appreciate your time tonight, really appreciate the hard work of your professionals, they did an excellent job of this application. And, uh, we look forward to moving ahead with this project, thank you.
Sounds good, thanks for coming by.
Thank you, counsel.
Take care.
All right.
Would you like us to leave the exhibits?
Yes, please.
Yep, ready, Donaldson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before we start the next one, we're going to take a ten-minute recess.
Let's see.
So it's eight forty-two, we'll be back at the.
Eight fifty-five.
Eight fifty-five. Hey, good to see you.
Good to see you. On the, on the front edge there, we keep the fence for example. Yeah, so, uh, Michelle is part of our firm, so and I, John Marcus, so we, we talked a little earlier today. So I'm assuming Michelle's gonna have to accuse, we're, we're opposing the next application.
Well, no, I know, we talked, I was.
Yeah. Oh, sure.
So it, it did cross my mind, quite frankly, because I'm not gonna lie, it's all those things you're soon as, you know. I wasn't gonna say anything, um, Julie got here because you never know what happens until you're in the middle of it. So if that's the case, you know, it, in an excess of caution and being very scrupulous about it, I think that that's appropriate. So you tell the chair and.
Yeah, we didn't, I, I just forgot that Michelle's on this board and I didn't, so I didn't wanna surprise her, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. There you go.
Sweet application.
All right, thank you.
I think you'll probably have nice contacts. Different views for you.
Well, I really hope to come back, it's hard to tell. It's hard to tell. It's when you get the hopes up.
We lost, uh.
Joe said the message.
You might wanna check on him.
The room of the worst. What's that? I've never been in a, in a restaurant like that. They probably just did that for the rent. It's probably a woman hundred, they just did it for the rent. The woman's room is probably.
We forgot to wake him up. The Phillies are losing four to nothing last I looked.
One aren't they?
Huh?
They're second half team. Just like the.
Well, it's the end of the seventh, they're still four to nothing and the Phillies are losing. Our Joe is famous. Bad.
All right. ZB twenty-three dash zero five, independent freight, twenty Warwick Ave, lot thirty-nine, lot one point zero one, zone R three, looking for a use variance, utilize existing building to recycle, fabricate, and distribution of wood pallets.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, professional staff, I don't know if it's the public who are here and, uh, for good reason. My name is Mike McKenna and I do represent the applicant, this property, as you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, is twenty Warwick, uh, Warwick. Uh, it is a three-point-six acre site that is in the R three zone, but in which is located a longstanding forty-four thousand. It is a three-point-six acre site that is in the R three zone, but in which is located a longstanding forty-four thousand six hundred square, six hundred fifty square feet building. Longstanding manufacturing, it's not conforming and we know this. We're here for a use variance. And Mr. Kavanaugh, the principal who founded the business and had hoped to finish his career here, slowly build a business, is gonna explain to you how it is that he has abrobed the site so quickly. With your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to make a couple of comments, and I'd like to put Mr. Kavanaugh on to tell the board and also his neighbors that he's gonna be leaving. If the river doesn't rise and the heavy doesn't break, he's on an agenda, he's found a nine-acre property, it is enormous property zone. We still have to finish this, we, we started this process while we were searching. And we found it during the search. And we truly thought we'd be through the board, a board just like this, like the boards I represent, fine now, and that we would never have to come here. But we do have to come, just in case something happens, real estate deals are funny, boards are funny. We've got approval letters and I will tell you that I've shared those with Mr. Pierpont, because I know that the application process elsewhere and this process and our neighbors' complaints, and we get it because we feel stressed at that site too, we've abroded. We went from twenty employees to a hundred employees, yeah, a lot of them live around here. But the truth is, we can't operate in there, we're, we're just, it's COVID, Mr. Kavanaugh's gonna explain it to you. But I wanted to tell you right from the outset what's going on. We're still going to put the application on just in case. I, 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 Mr. DeVito is a planner, I think, well-known to you, certainly well-known to me over my forty-two years. And he's gonna explain to you that this is a non-conforming site and how it could be made better. But the truth is to us, it can't really be made much better for us. We're, we're really, we're struggling there, and no matter how many holes we try and plug in the dike, when they, when problems are happening to our neighbors and to the property, that's a distraction from doing business.
You're just a victim of your own success.
It, it, well, it's COVID, I will tell you that it's, this is not the way Mr. Kavanaugh foresaw success. It's very stressful, getting the calls from the neighbors, fixing problems because of truckers that he doesn't own and out of control. It's just a constant diversion and a very difficult thing. What was the worst was when we couldn't find a property. It's very difficult for my.
Excuse me one second, sir.
Yes, sir.
Just hang on, just, I wanna talk to the chairman.
Sure.
We're gonna have a request?
Oh, yes, right, I forgot, sorry. Before we go any further, Ms. Wyman is going to step down and accuse herself. She may be one of the people left in the public that's here.
Do I still have seven?
Six.
Six.
Mr. Solicitor?
Well, it doesn't, you, you, for all tons of purposes, you didn't start yet. So it's up to you, and I apologize for that little bit of confusion, but it happens.
Could you please explain to the public that, that, why, why?
Well, let's remind ourselves, if I understand things, you're asking for a use variance. A use variance may only be granted by a zoning board of adjustment in any particular jurisdiction. That's this, the zoning board of adjustment, but you need five affirmative votes for a use variance as opposed to a bulk variance or C variance, the, that would be four votes. So you wanna maximize your chances for the benefit of your clients, so often, what I think Mr. McKenna's talking about is the fact that many applicants wanna only show up when there are seven zoning board members, so they have a full board, and they have the benefit of getting five votes because they need more votes for a use variance than they would need for a bulk variance. I, I'm just trying to give it a short version, but does that make sense?
It does, and I will tell you that universally, boards I represent grant that as a matter of right before it starts. Simply because, I think it's just a difference, you have to base it, if there were five, it would be malpractice to me.
Listen, it's your call.
I know, but I'll tell you why I feel bad. We, we're businessmen, these folks came out, I wanted to tell them about the use, but I don't like it that it's nine and they came out and I have to make this decision, I can't go with six, I've never done that.
Well, let's, let's be clear about this. Until today, we had no idea that there was a conflict.
It's not fault.
In any way, shape or form.
I'm not blaming, I just feel bad.
I just learned recently, like, a little bit ago.
I, I really wanted to start out by telling them we get it. I spoke with Mr. Selte, who I've known for decades, they've got able counsel, and I told him I was gonna tell him we were getting, and I shared with him the, the private news as I have with Mr. Pierpont, I've given him the contract and the review letters from the other board, this is for real. But I can't commit malpractice and I have to invoke that right, I really do.
You don't hear the board pushing back.
No, I know, but I feel bad.
No, what, what, what Mr. McKenna's saying is, regretfully, he's in one of those pickles where your client's interest must come first. And it is a paramount consideration for him because of the six versus seven members being present. So is that a request for an adjournment until the May eighteenth meeting, the next meeting?
Yes, please, and would obviate the need for renoticing.
So I will then make an announcement, only this time I'll try to do it correct the first time, that this matter will not be heard tonight. There'll be no further notice given, but the matter will return to this board on May eighteen, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM back in this room. So you'll receive no further notice and there'll be no further newspaper publication. Counsel?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, my name's Marcus Elte, uh, with the law firm of Brandon Connery. We are, I guess, the cause of the, of the disqualification, but I just wanted to ask the board, so the, the conflict will not go away because Glassboro Housing Authority is my client, our firm's client, and they are gonna be objecting to this application. So I just wanted to understand, at the next meeting, there would be an ability to appoint a substitute member? Because we're never gonna have seven, right, unless there's another board member.
You gotta look at her.
I have one member who has resigned, yeah, I'm waiting for his letter, and the other one had a conflict and could not attend tonight. So I will reach out to the other person, which would give us the seven that you need.
Back to the seven.
Because one person is still ineligible.
Ms. Wyman will still be ineligible, but, but Mr. Perner hopefully will be here and I can reach out to him to make sure we'll have seven next. Does everybody else able to come next month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we would really request that, and I apologize because I didn't realize about the conflict, I didn't, it didn't register with me.
Let's intervene, it happens.
Yeah, so in our, in our mutual interest, it would be okay, I'm sure Mr. Selte and I would both like to call maybe a couple days in advance. If somebody's not gonna make it, we both get that you're volunteers, that you're all volunteers. Somebody's not gonna make it, this wouldn't have to happen, I, we don't care about us, but it just, we could fix this if we called a couple days in advance. I know commitments, this is still volunteers, but that would be helpful.
Not wrong.
So it would be the May meeting, Mr. Chair?
Yeah. May eighteen, you were correct, Ms. Vampiro?
Correct.
All right, there we go.
And we can contact members of the board and hopefully everybody committing on the eighteenth so we can see attention.
Abby, excuse us.
Thank you, thank you everyone, everyone stay well.
Don't thank us, we're getting sicker and sicker by the day, breathing sold us twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. We're praying from me to you, from this mess.
So listen, we're gonna hear this next month, it's not getting heard, it's not, it's not, it's not getting, it's not getting heard this month. So i- it's not really productive to yell.
I can't even talk in the morning.
Ma'am, ma'am, we're in the middle of a meeting, ma'am, we're in the middle of a meeting, excuse us.
I'm in the middle of a meeting too, I live there.
All right, all right.
How dare them come into our neighborhood and ruin our health?
Are you with her?
Since we have no reports, workshop committee is a problem. Workshop committee. Quiet, please, we're still in a meeting.
Yeah, would everybody, you know, we, we understand, we, we just wanna, we got some more stuff to do, so we're gonna get to it. Just ask you to kinda excuse yourself and, and have a, have a wonderful weekend. It's okay, I got a minute.
Hey, Card, what do we do on Tuesday?
Self-storage, don't you?
Huh?
Self-storage.
So, ah, yes, thank you, now I remember, we were, and I was talking about this with someone before the meeting started. There was a proposal brought to the joint committee there about a storage, and storage seems to be something that we hear every other day anymore. Property off of Woodbury-Glassboro Road, where Canal is on the Delcy Drive side, and this is back of the wooded area that's there. A company wishes to put a, a storage unit place there. And they came with proposals of what, they wanted to close off, if I remember correctly, they wanted to not have their entrances coming from Woodbury-Glassboro Road but going on to Delcy Drive as coming on and off. And that would shield them, they, they presume from the homes that are off of Woodbury-Glassboro Road, whereas off of Delcy Drive, it's all business. So they're, that was just their fir-, oh yeah, they're just, that's just their first thing, talking what things may or may not work. And of course, I don't know, I have no idea, and maybe, and maybe our fearless lawyer here does, whether Pittman, um, I couldn't think of any storage units in Pittman, and I'm thinking that the possibility they wanna put one right there is walk two blocks and you're in Pittman.
Wasn't there one like, was that Mantua?
There's one in Man-, there's Mantua, but.
It's right there by fifty-five.
They certainly don't have as many as Glassboro has or, or have on the books.
We seem to be coming the home of storage.
Yes, yes.
Great, anything else?
No, I think that's the only thing we talked about.
Great. Can we have the solicitor's report, sir?
Oh, well, yeah, sure, thank you. We have a couple of resolutions for your consideration, Mr. Chair members. You'll remember Vision Stream, and this is resolution twenty-three dash nine, and this was the eighty-nine unit apartment building for your consideration, Mr. Chair members.
Do I have a motion to approve resolutions, R twenty-three nine and R twenty-three ten?
So.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Harvey?
Four.
Mr. Santor?
Four.
Mr. Smith?
Four.
Ms. Wyman?
Four.
And the chairman.
Mr. Lopez? Ms. Cameola?
Four.
Mr. Mooning?
Four.
Okay.
In my attempt to keep up with the chairman, I stepped on the secretary's roll call, I apologize. But he already talked about a resolution, um, R twenty-three dash ten, and that's the PVA Investments, the amended use approval. That, they were here tonight on the site plan thing, this is for the amended use, and you had already gotten that approved, so for your consideration, now your signature. And that's it. You're done.
Any party from the public? Since we're cleared out, do I have a motion to adjourn?
They're all waiting for us at the bottom of the steps.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it.